City Council Community Finance, please come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Carrera?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Repouzo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting and may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have two individuals that have signed up for citizen sympathy. First, we have Alexander Sylvia. Alexander Silva. Something matter demolition delay ordinance. You all in the standing have three minutes, correct?
Yep. Yes. Hello, Alexander Silva, 148 Purchase Street. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the Preservation Society of Fall River. Members of the City Council, the Preservation Society of Fall River thanks the Council and the administration for reexamining the city's demolition delay ordinance to help better ensure Fall River's historical and cultural resources are not carelessly destroyed. At the City Council Subcommittee on Ordinance and Legislation meeting on April 16th, representatives of the Preservation Society detailed some changes that we thought would better help protect the city's and residents' best interests. The Preservation Society appreciates Corporation Council's support for the recommendation to increase the length of a demolition delay for historic city-owned properties currently from six months to a year. This is an important step, but only a step. At the Subcommittee meeting, we recommended that the most important change the city can make to its demolition delay ordinance would be to change the process so that the community has a better opportunity to learn about the demolition plans, verify good faith efforts, and possibly come up with a solution to protect the city's historic and cultural resources. Our sister city of New Bedford does this by having its historical commission advise its City Council on the demolition delay ordinance, with the City Council weighing in on these important decisions in a more public setting and ultimately having a final vote. We have sent you earlier today the New Bedford demolition delay ordinance for your review. It's about seven pages long. There are actually 18 steps in the procedure for the city to follow to issue a demolition permit for that. The Preservation Society believes that New Bedford's demolition delay ordinance better reflects the ordinance Fall River should duplicate if the city ever hopes to capitalize on its history and culture, similar to how New Bedford has, especially ahead of redevelopment efforts along the waterfront, downtown, and Flint neighborhoods. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, the Preservation Society of Fall River's Board Directors.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Kelly Buchanan. Subject matter, illegal encampments.
Good evening, all. I'm just back to see where are we. I know the last time I came to the committee meeting, there was three of us, three of you guys here with the attorney. He was supposed to do an ordinance is getting back, it's ramping back up. Paul, I know you've seen it firsthand with me, as well as Michelle. I'm not sure if anybody else went down that area. It's disgusting and it's getting really, really bad again. I mean, I just want my safety and security for me and my neighborhood.
Counselor C3, Counselor Hart?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Kelly, we have gone down there together and it is really bad. And so, I mean, I had a public safety meeting about maybe a month ago, so I plan on having another one at the end of June. I'm not sure where it's going to be yet, but it's going to be, it might be close to where you live. I'm working on that, or some other locations, but we're definitely going to have that meeting. But it also too, it's definitely a public safety issue, but it's really a health concern. That's so, there's a lot of parties that have to get involved, but I'm definitely involved in it and I'm with you on it. But it's going to, you know, it's going to definitely take some time, but we can, the next public safety meeting, we can address it and you'll definitely know when it's going to happen.
And I appreciate that. We're coming up on a year that I've been fighting this. It's not like I came last month and all of a sudden, and I get time. Again, and I'm, nothing against anybody on this board, it's meetings after meetings after meetings and nothing could be done. We need accountability. Let the police do their job, go in there, they don't want the help, they don't want the treatment, they can't stay. It's that simple. Just like I can't throw my trash out, we got the trash release that comes and checks my barrels to make sure I don't got a pizza box in my recycling bin, but yet, I mean, you've seen it. You've seen it as well.
You know where we were on, down Bay Street with softball fielders behind there?
Yep, Middle Street, all the way down there.
That's gotten more.
Oh, yeah, and now they're going back down where the tracks are.
Okay, and also down where the rail?
Where the fire was, where you went.
Where the rail tracks are?
Yep.
Okay.
So they, and it's just more and more.
Yeah.
They're moving back in. You know, they never left, but now I don't know from the other ones closing, we're getting more down there. So I'm just asking, I know I'm a pain in the neck, I'm not going to stop.
No, I hear you.
Like, it's awful.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
You yield, Counselor. There's a couple other people.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C3, Counselor Repouzo?
Thank you. So, just to update that last conversation we had, we had the Subcommittee meeting of the Subcommittee of Health and Environmental Affairs, which I'm the chair of. Counselor Deion, Counselor Perez, and I discussed it, and we left it off with Corporation Council, Rumsey, to produce that ordinance. Him and I spoke on Monday, he's currently working on that, and as soon as that is squared away, the idea is to be forwarded to the Subcommittee for Ordinances. So that is currently in process.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C5, Counselor Vice President Perez?
It's not only you, Kelly, that comes, and I know that some of your neighbors are older and they want you to be their voice because they told me, I talked to Kelly and Kelly, but we all did get an email yesterday on Monday from a gentleman who lives in that area who claims he is afraid for his safety there too. And we did receive something from the railroad, remember? The railroad, last month, they sent something that, you know, they have to be so many feet away from the railroad, but then after that, I know they cleaned out Brayton Avenue again this week, and it is, it's really a health concern. And every homeless person that is down there has been offered help, have been offered to look for a placement, get into treatment, you know, getting an apartment, whatever. They refuse. So that's the thing that Attorney Rumsey is looking at because there are some cities that are doing things. Everybody's afraid the ACLU is going to come down and they're going to sue us, whatever, but meanwhile, I'd rather deal with them than have residents not feeling safe. I mean, we have to do something.
It's lawlessness. It's, you know, there's no structure. Like, I can't be lawless, I can't just go dump stuff, I can't go pee and poop and tell my tenants to go use a commode and go throw it in the park. Y'all would be down there quick, right? So there's got to be accountability and everybody's afraid of the accountability thing. You're offering them, if they don't want it, I agree, they don't, nobody should be forced to do anything against their, but they can't stay there, there has to be a consequence. There's trespassing, there's drug use, alcohol use, peeing, pooping in public, you know, other things that are going on, fires, they're lighting fires down there.
I mean, it actually breaks my heart that there are people living in those conditions.
They shouldn't be.
Mental health has, you know, a lot to do with people's inability to move forward or do things, but we have, and we, this council has spent money on getting clinicians and getting people down there, and we have done that. So I'll wait to see, and I'm sure that Counselor Repouzo will have a meeting as soon as we get the ordinance done, and that will give teeth and that will put the police department in the, you know.
To be able to do their job.
Right. They just can't go down now, and I don't want to see something happen, but thank you for continuing to come down and continuing to fight.
Thank you, Counselor. You yield?
I yield. Thank you, Kelly.
Counselor C2, do you have something to chime in as well?
Yeah, my only comment would be, I'm not quite understanding how we can have so much muscle and move them all, move them out from Brayton Avenue, but yet we don't have the same muscle and aren't taking the same action on Bay Street. Obviously, the encampment on Bay Street is much closer to the homes of residents in the city, which is much more impactful. So that's my main concern, and I hope, I don't know if ultimately there was a decision with the Supreme Court in April, I know we were waiting for that. I haven't heard. Yeah, there has been no result of that, but, you know. I agree, I agree, we need to somehow, we need to take action and let it, let the dust fall where it may.
Listen, as a taxpayer, I'm all right with let them come after and sue. I mean, really, we are living in hell. Our area is looking like a pit, so I'm not worried about them going and suing the city. I honestly, I'm not. We pay enough in taxes, our taxes keep going up and up and up. Give us something back. I received nothing from my tax money that I'm paying, and I've been here and I'm not, nothing against you guys personally, but it's almost a year that I've been fighting this. This should have been resolved eight months ago.
And as the warm weather comes, there are more and more, and there's also more and more and more young children playing on that lower field, right next to where they are.
Every time I walk by there, I cringe because I know what's in there. I won't even walk over there. I won't walk over there unless I'm suited up and I got something I can throw away.
I mean, I live in the extreme south.
Because you wanted to get out the car, what did I tell you, it's not safe for us to get out and walk in there.
I live in the extreme south end of the city, I drive down Bay Street, I drive right by there every time I come to City Council. The kids were playing, the pickleball court, the tennis courts were full. There are so many people there that they don't even have room to park, they have to park on the grass. We have to do something to ensure the safety and health of the people who live in this city.
That's what I'm asking.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C3, Counselor Washington?
Yeah, I just want to give some clarity that I think, I believe Brayton Avenue was state-owned property and that's why they were able to go in there with the state police and just clear it out. We own the other properties and that's why we haven't, you know, and just as we're making headway, I know that there is a lot of work being done behind the scenes to try to find these people housing, placement, mental health institutions, treatment. It's not easy. I mean, our shelter, our shelter in Fall River went from 50 beds to 30 beds over, you know, so as we go to place these people, you know, so we have to look at that. Why are we losing beds and not gaining beds, and do we need to look at other agencies to get beds? We have a huge problem, and so there's so many moving factors, and I think that you will get some headway when this ordinance is passed, but I do think that things are being done and then things happen. Like, you know, that's 20 beds, that's 20 beds that are not, no longer there for the summer, will be back up in the wintertime, and so I know that there's a push to find housing, find affordable housing, you know, we're looking, where do we place these people? And so, that want to be placed, I agree with you, people shouldn't be able to live like that, it is a health factor.
They're human beings, not animals.
Exactly, they're sick people.
It's all in the south end, though. How many, and again, how many encampments are, illegal encampments are in the north end?
Well, I don't, I can tell you, well, I can tell you why people congregate in those areas, because that's, you know, the kind of world I work in, they congregate in areas where there is bathrooms, where there is food, where there's gas stations, it's why where services are, so you, in your, you know, so there is, you know, you will see that, but I will tell you that there is a problem with, we need more services, more places, more shelter beds, there's no doubt about that for these people, and I agree with you 100% that people shouldn't be able to just stay in these areas, it's just not healthy.
They've been offered, and I know, I've been doing this for almost a year now, so I know they've been offered treatment, I know they've been, and they have the right to refuse.
And 14 of them just went.
So when they refuse, we just allow them to stay there, it's okay, and we bring them down, the harm reduction and all that.
So, no, I will, I have to.
I know, I talked to the guys and I've talked to the homeless committee.
So I will tell you that 14 people did go to treatment, 14 of those people decided to go to treatment, get off the streets, and now what the backend of that is what you're looking at, is getting these ordinance, so we have some legal leverage to move these people and to get them placed, when they say, listen, I'm not from around here, I'll stay here, I'll stay in these woods, I don't care, now we can move them. And so I think it's a process, it doesn't happen overnight, but, and look, it's my city, I love my city, this is my city, and I want to see the best for my city, but these things sometime take time, and I know firsthand that they are being worked on, and I know, look, the state-owned property, you see them go in there, and they cleaned it all out, so unfortunately, maybe it's not as quick as what we want.
Quick, it's been over a year, almost a year. Almost a year I've been fighting it, not counting that what they live down on the rail trail for. So I don't, I mean, if you need somebody to help with the committee, I can give somebody a hand.
I think you should join, I think, I honestly think you are such an advocate, you should do that, and you should join.
But if you're going to take the advice and follow through with it, we need, there's reasons why we have ordinances, there's a reason why we have laws, it has to be followed.
Absolutely.
As a law-abiding citizen, I follow the rules and the laws. So it should go, it shouldn't be, you get to do what you want and I get to do what I want, that's not how it works.
I understand.
We're living in law, it's lawless.
Fortunate or not, these people, they, they're a squatter, there are some rights there, and so we have to, we have to be, we've never been in this situation before, so we have to create ordinance for us in the city to be able to do that.
I'm willing to come on, I'm willing to come and help on that committee.
Well, duly noted, I think we should call the man's office and you should get on that homeless committee. Listen, you're passionate, you love the city, you just want what's best for the city.
Again, it's got to be accountability. I've worked in it long enough, so I get it, and the more you give, like Michelle says all the time, hand up, not a handout. So the more we coddle and we don't hold people accountable, they're going to continue to do what they're doing, because there's no, there's no, there's nothing they have to lose. If I was getting everything brought to me and I don't have to, I keep my whole check, I don't get to do none.
I think, I think that everybody's agreeing with you, that this is not a place for these people to stay, it's not a place for anyone, not even an animal.
This is what I keep hearing, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it.
Well, the good news is.
I'm tired of hearing, we're working on it, I want to see some action. Like, I've heard, and again, it's nothing personal against anybody in here, because Michelle, you have Linda, like.
Listen, I haven't been to your homeless camp, but I've walked into the other homeless camps, the big homeless camps, big, and so I've seen.
I'm not saying.
It's tragic, it's tragic the way these people live in.
These meetings do nothing, we need action.
Well, I'm going to have to say, because this is being recorded and I want people to know, there is steps being taken, a lot of steps, people are being placed, they're moving these camps, so I don't want people to think that things are not being done, they are not moving at the pace that we would like them to see, but things are being done, and I encourage, and I'm sorry, but I don't think the administration has done a well enough job of saying the steps that have gone and happened, because there are steps, and I think the community needs to know the steps that have been taken. And I'll tell you what, I don't know all the steps, but I do talk to the homeless workers that are down there, they're letting people know, you can't stay, you got to move, you got to get to another state, city, place, you can't, you can't stay here, so things are being done. Have they done a good job of communicating that? No, can they do better? Absolutely.
Well, I can tell you, down by me, a majority of the people that were there last year are there this year.
And it's not okay.
So, I don't, I don't see a change. For me personally, I can't speak for the other camps, you know, but I can speak from down by my, my way. So, I mean, I'm just, I'm tired, enough is enough, I, you know, then, I don't want to pay taxes, why should I pay taxes? If I'm not receiving any services for my taxes, why pay taxes? I'm paying an arm and a leg for water, for everything else, and again, I get it, it's part of being a homeowner, but also, I'm supposed to have some securities and some safeties and different things, if I can't do something, others shouldn't be able to allow to do it, it's not, they get the, they're allowed to do it, but we're not, because we're homeowners, law-abiding citizens, it's not right. So there has to be action, again, again, it's nothing personal against anybody, I'm fed up, I'm tired.
I can hear that in your voice.
I'm tired. My neighborhood's tired. I've got people, they're selling their houses and leaving.
I listen, and it's a.
There's husbands and wives that, wives are leaving with their kids and going to stay elsewhere because they're not, they don't feel safe.
It's, listen, I wish there was a quicker, faster way, I do.
You yield, Counselor, thank you. Counselor C3, do you want to add something?
Yeah, just real quick, when you, Kelly, brought up something about, or it was Counselor Deion, about giving them certain things, and I do recall now that when we were down there, there was some, was an agency or somebody bringing a platter of food, that's got to, I don't know who was doing that, but that.
Food, they bring them harm reduction.
That's got to, that has to stop, that's got to stop, because all you're doing is enabling them. So, again, I just wanted to mention that because it was, I do remember that, that that happened, so, but that's all I wanted to say. I don't call you tomorrow about the.
I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
You know, I'll just add, I can understand how Ms. Buchanan is feeling the way she does, because I feel that same way. We have been talking about this well over time before Ms. Buchanan showed up a year ago. We were already talking about this, and all we kept hearing from administration, we need to do an ordinance, we need to do it legal, we want to make sure that we're not going to get sued, we want to make sure we're doing it right, well, it's been a year. So either do it or get off the pot, but you're not giving the support to the police or anybody else to do things. Yes, there are people that we've helped, but there are many people there who do not want the help, and she's right, if that was in other sections of the city, something would have done, been done quicker. And that's not fair. And for her to be putting up with this for a year, we definitely need the legal leverage, but sometimes when we have to get ordinances done and this and that, it just takes time.
And I get it.
I get it takes time, but a year?
But the other side of it, do you want me to get, I'll go and get signatures if you want, if you guys are that worried about a lawsuit from taxpayers and law-abiding citizens that live here in the city, have them sign it, are they worried about getting sued?
I think this city has been, this city has done yeoman's work trying to assist everyone that's there. We have sympathy for people with mental health or drug addiction or alcoholism or homelessness, whatever their issue is, we sympathize with them, but we have a legal right to the residents of our community that they live in an environment that's healthy, that's healthy, and you're not living in a healthy environment or a safe environment, if that's what people there are feeling. And again, we have received more than one email from residents there. I checked, because I thought maybe they're just sending them to me. No, it went to the entire council, and there was one on Monday, so.
They're scared, people in my community are scared, they're older, they're scared, they're afraid to report stuff.
Get the legal leverage.
Yeah, listen, I think everyone is frustrated with this issue, and I agree, if the state can come down in a matter of days and clean up that.
Why can't we?
We can't.
If we can't take care of the state, city property, we're, just turn over that land to the state, let them come down and take care of it. If we're afraid we're going to get sued or things are going on, but I understand the fact that the neighborhood is afraid and they want to get it cleaned up, and they should, they have every right to. By the same token, we have been trying to make some efforts to do it, and a certain fashion hasn't worked, so now maybe we need to do something else, but I think it's frustrating, everyone senses it, everyone feels it, not just there, in other areas as well, something has to be done, and the sooner we do it, the better off, but if we can't take care of that piece of property, then let's just turn it over to somebody else that can't take care of it.
I'll take it, I'll build on it.
Counselor C2, Counselor Deion?
Yeah, the only thing I want to mention is, we do have a railway that runs through there, so that is private property, and 25 feet on either side of the rail, of the actual rails, is owned by the railroad company. And those people, anybody within 25, within 50 feet from the middle out, just 50 feet, can be removed because it's private property. With that, I yield.
Counselor C1, you want to add something?
So I appreciate everything you're saying, I've said this before, I think it's a struggle and it's a challenge. So, one of the issues, we keep talking about what the state can do, the reason the state was able to do it was because the minute they moved them from that location, they had to put them in housing. If we remove these, these people from the encampments, we have to house them, so the question comes, where do we house them? The state has the ability to house it, because obviously they've got all the migrants, they've got all these hotels already scheduled and slated, so they're able to move these individuals. If we go and move people, by law, we have to, we have to have a location for them to be housed, and we just don't have that, so.
A state. The correction, they're using it for illegal immigrants, but I'm not.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't own that, so that means we would have to pay for housing, right? So that's, that's where it comes down to, so it's funding associated with it, we have to make sure that they have a location to actually have a roof over their head, you can't just remove them from, from the encampments.
So I want to just make sure I understand this right, so I'm homeless, I end up on the streets, you tell me I can't stay there, you have to pay for my housing?
Yeah.
Something's wrong with the system.
It's tricky to know your thing, I will say this.
That's what we're talking about with the Supreme Court, comes back down to the Ninth Circuit Court.
That needs to change, I'm not saying don't help people, because I'm all about helping people.
But that's, I guess that's what I'm trying to, I guess, articulate, because we keep going around and around and around, that's what the law states. The governor has.
What law is that?
It's coming right from the.
Shelter.
Yep.
The right to shelter?
The Ninth Circuit Court has ruled, so now it's before the Supreme Court.
Is that the Washington case? So I don't think that has any variance on Massachusetts, does it?
It does.
It does, it does, because the Attorney General has, and the governor has stated that that's, that's the requirement in Massachusetts.
May I point to clarification, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm looking for clarification.
That's all right, you're going to get it from, Attorney's not going to come, you want to come down and speak on it? Right now, it's, yeah, right now, it's a bit time, well beyond the three minutes. I think we're all saying the same thing at this point, I think we all want to resolve it.
I appreciate you guys again, I mean, thanks.
I do, I do want to state one thing, as Counselor Washington pitched up, we have removed some people there that are seeking treatment and have been able to put them in housing, and some of those people, like Counselor Perez said, don't want to leave, they want to live there, they want to stay there, so that's the crutch in the whole situation. But we are working on, I know it's not as quick as most groups like, as fast as I would like any of the counselors, but there is progress being made, we're just going to make sure that we end it quickly. Thank you so much.
Like you said, one point, point of clarification.
Counselor Kobe?
Sorry, guys.
To Counselor Kadeem's point, Massachusetts is the only right-to-shelter state in the United States of America. The only other state that's close is New York, just a New York City, and that was passed in the 80s for unwent mothers who were pregnant, things like that.
I don't think it's being followed properly, but I don't know, I'm going to do some research on it.
Yes, right to shelter.
But I'm pretty sure that the governor is not following the proper procedure.
So.
Of proper law.
Counselor Kadeem is absolutely right that we have, we have, we have an obligation statewide to pass by the state, Massachusetts Legislature to shelter.
I'm going to do some research.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's all you have to Google is right to shelter.
Item number two. An order requesting approval of a 10-year contract for the operation, maintenance, and management of the wastewater treatment facility and collection system. It was referred to the council on May 14th. Counselor in seat four, Counselor Kobe.
The only question I had is, and it was answered after conversing with Counselor Deion, my only concern was the length of the contract. We did get a legal opinion that, from Corporation Council, that it's illegal to have a contract that, that length, but whether or not there was an inflationary clause, so to speak, you Uh, but whether or not there was an inflationary clause, so to speak, you know, we're, during inflation, can it be adjusted over that long period of time? And there is a clause, uh, in there, so I'm prepared to, to support this tonight, so.
You're making a recommendation to send the full council for adoption or adoption?
Yes, I believe it is, Counselor Perez. I believe it's, uh.
Refer to full council.
Before full council, but I'm, I'm gonna be supporting it, so I'll, I'll make that motion if you want me to.
Second.
So refer to full council for adoption or just for action?
Adopt.
Okay, motion to refer to full council for adoption has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Motion to adjourn finance has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Finance is now adjourned, ready to sit, the council will begin at seven o'clock.
Two minutes.
City Council, please come to order. The clerk will call the robe.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Deon?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Carrera?
Here.
Ponti? Reposo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chair please rise or make a silent prayer? Prior to the silent prayer, Counselor Deon is gonna read a statement on a couple of individuals who have recently passed.
I received this letter, well, I'm gonna, you'll hear me better. Um, I received this from the Fall River Municipal Retirees Association. They asked that it be read here. The officers and members of the Fall River Municipal Retirees Association wish to recognize two of our members, Manuel Cavallo and Joseph Lima. We believe it only fitting that today, in the shadow of Memorial Day, these men in their service to this nation and this city are publicly recognized. We ask this because they truly represent the retirees of this city who go unnoticed, underappreciated, and sometimes disparaged. Let the public hear their story. Manuel Cavallo was born on October nineteenth, nineteen twenty-four. He served his country during World War II in the United States Army from April nineteen forty-three to February nineteen forty-six in China, Burma, India theater. He came home to Fall River and worked for thirty-one years for the Fall River Housing Authority. Joseph Lima was born on December fifteenth, nineteen twenty-six. He served his country during World War II in the United States Navy in the Pacific Theater. He too came home to Fall River and served for thirty-four years as a firefighter and fire lieutenant with the FRFD. Both of these men received medals and commendations for their service to their country and were some of the last of our greatest generation. Both passed on the same day, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Manny would have been one hundred in October, Joe ninety-eight in December. Their story stands as a snapshot into the lives of everyday Americans who do what they must do for their nation and their city without fanfare or even recognition. It stands as a stark reminder that all our retirees have a story and they all deserve to be respected. As their story is being read in the same chamber, that a city official once referred to our retirees as liabilities. I hope that seeing these two great Americans as human beings and not numbers on a ledger will ensure that conduct will never be condoned again. Rest in peace Manny and Joe, and may flights of angels sing thee to thy rest.
Please remain standing for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just wanted to state, Counselor, the, the letter there, the, the section that you talked about where a city official referred to the retirees as a liability. That was not a city counselor or an administrator, mayor that said it, it was not.
No, it was not a city counselor, no, no.
Just want to make it perfectly clear that that city official is known not to be a city counselor, and it wasn't the mayor of the city that said it either. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made where they perceive or unperceive by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Court?
First item before you is a communication from the mayor in an order establishing spending limits of the revolving funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item two is the mayor's request for the confirmation of Andrew Howieak to the sewer commission.
Motion to confirm.
I have.
Seconded.
To confirm has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, um, on the motion, Counselor C five, Counselor.
I just had a question on how much this individual knew about sewer operations and things like that, but I know that no one is being put off. I did talk to, um, uh, City Administrator Atkins, who said that he's filling a vacancy and that there was also, because he's, I believe he's an attorney. And then I asked if that was a requirement, that they have an attorney, which it is, but we do have one on there. I don't have a problem with it, I just would hope that people that go on water boards or on sewer commissions have a lot of knowledge. I know it's hard to find, but I'm sure there are people out there who'd be willing, so I'm just, I hope he has a lot of knowledge in it. As an attorney, I'm sure he can look stuff up, but with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item, item three is a legal opinion from Corporation Council regarding the creation of a proposed ordinance relating to the appointment of constables.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to refer to ordinance?
It was already there.
Then why is it coming back to us as a community? Shouldn't this be discussed?
The committee requested a legal opinion.
Huh? Shouldn't it be vetted in?
The committee requests legal opinion.
Okay.
So you can send it back to ordinance committee, if that's, well, it works for me, all your ordinance, except in place on file. It's a communication. Counselor C five, Counselor Perez?
The reason that we had asked if we could change something with the ordinance, that's what we had asked, and we can't. And the rationale was because at one point, I believe it was Counselor Kadeem that put it in, I'm not sure. But the reason that we asked was because there was a constable during the Jaisal Korea administration that put in for his constable license, and it was denied. The mayor denied it, and there was no other recourse. So we were looking if we could change that, but by what the attorneys said and what they looked at, it's within the jurisdiction of the mayor, and you can't put executive and legislative bodies in the same. So that's why it just, we got their opinion, we read it.
I withdraw my, my motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, motion has been made to accept and place on file and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four is also a legal opinion from Corporation Council regarding the creation of a proposed ordinance relating to the Armory Commission.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made and seconded. On the motion, Counselor C two, Counselor Deon?
Yeah, um, in this opinion, it states, um, having reviewed the request for an ordinance amendment to allow the Historical Commission to assist the Board of Park Commissioners with various duties relevant to the Bank Street Armory, it's the opinion of the Law Department that a proposed ordinance is unnecessary. Well, I'd like to first point out that it was never asked that the Historical be put in there to assist the Park Department. Clearly, in the original, um.
Resolution.
Resolution, which I was the one who wrote the resolution, um, that the Committee on Ordinance and Legislation convened to discuss amending Chapter fifty-four of the Code of the City, which relates to public facilities, to reflect the current state of the property and to transfer the oversight of the Armory Commission from Board of Park Commissioners to the Historical Commission. So the request was never for them to assist. Secondly, it states the Armory is owned by the City of Fall River and held under the control of the City Council as part of the city's general corporate property. There is no evidence to suggest that the city transferred control of the Armory to the Armory Commission and/or Park Board. The Park Board does not currently have any powers, duties, or responsibilities related to the Armory. Therefore, the ordinance isn't needed. And they cite in it a section from, um, a legal opinion from Corporation Council, Rumsey, where it states Article three of the Code of the City of Fall River states that the Board of Park Commissioners shall promote the city armory in a manner which will be most beneficial to the city and shall endeavor to maximize and diversify its use. The problem with that is, this is the Code of the City. These are the city ordinances. They, he left out part of it. And the part that was left out, the part, Board of Park Commissioners shall have and exercise all the powers, duties, and responsibilities of the Armory Commission. That was left out. So I disagree that they don't have the power when it's here in city ordinance. And the reason that it was requested that the Historical Commission get involved is because they are aware of the laws. They are involved with the Massachusetts Historical Commission, um, because it also goes on to say somewhere in here, uh, the Office of Corporation Council is not aware of the existence of any additional orders of the City Council officially limiting the use of the Armory or transferring control of the Armory to a particular city or board. So again, I will disagree with part of that. Because this here is a deed restriction, preservation restriction agreement between the Commonwealth of Massachusetts by and through the Massachusetts Historical Commission and the City of Fall River. So there is in fact a deed restriction. There are limits as to what can and can't be done there. And again, the expertise lies with the Historic Commission. So yes, nobody's asking for ownership to be transferred. Nobody's saying take it out of the jurisdiction of the City Council. We're just asking that in ordinance, they remove the Board of Park Commissioners and replace it with Historic Commission. And I know that, um, I don't know, and anybody feel free to correct me. I'm not sure what the ordinance committee, what happened for the, this, for to, for this thing to change. And I will, um, ask the Chair of the Ordinance if she would like to speak on this. And otherwise, I would like to refer it back to ordinance and legislation for that simple change so that we can move forward and the Historic Commission can have the right to perform the duties. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C five.
My colleague raises some good questions. Um, when I read the opinion, I was a little baffled myself, and therefore I agree with her request to refer back to ordinance. I don't know if she made that as a motion. If not, I will make a motion that it be referred back to ordinance.
And I will second it.
Second, okay.
As a point of information, Mr. President, if we can just make sure that we refer this letter as well back to the ordinance committee?
It's relevant.
Adopt is amended, I guess?
Yeah. Refer to ordinance committee as adopted.
Motion.
As amended, I'm sorry.
But it's just a letter, right? It's an opinion. So we, we don't, we don't have to refer to the opinion.
Right.
So we, you have to make a separate motion. Right now, all we.
Well, it's still in, it's still ordinance committee, we tabled that, waiting for the thing, so we'll just.
It's in the ordinance committee already.
Right, so it'll just, we'll take, lift it off the table and, um.
It was referred to Corporation Council. What's that?
It was referred to Corporation Council. It, so it was, it's out of the jurisdiction of the committee. So if you want to discuss it again, you need to refer this back to the ordinance committee.
Okay, so refer it back.
Second.
So just, can I get a point of information? So every time we refer something out to Corporation Council, it does not stay in that committee?
Unless you table it and you were to send a communication to ask for the information, but it wasn't tabled there, so it was referred.
But even if you don't table the council, when you get the communication back, you can send it back to the ordinance committee as part of the.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess just in my minds, even, so we'll, we'll table it in the future, right? In my mind, if we, especially, especially in ordinance, right? When you go back and forth and have the discussion about ordinances, you refer it to Corporation Council, and I just assumed that that item would stay in there until we, we actually take a vote.
In this case, it was a recommendation that went to the council and the council took that vote to accept the committee's recommendation and request the opinion.
Thank you.
So a motion is to refer the item back to the ordinance committee, has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five is a communication regarding two items. The first is a proposed ordinance amendment regarding the one-year demolition delay for city-owned property.
Refer to Committee on Ordinances.
Second.
Motion to refer to Committee on Ordinance and Legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the second matter was a legal opinion regarding the creation of a proposed ordinance related to deed restriction on sale of pretty, city-owned property over fifty years old.
I would refer that to the Committee on Ordinance and Legislation as well.
Motion to refer to Committee on Ordinance and Legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item six are the Traffic Commission making recommendations to the ordinances?
Refer to Committee on Ordinances.
Committee on Ordinances.
Motion, motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinance and Legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on May twenty-first voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Counselor Sampson absent and not voting. These are handicap parking ordinances.
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble.
Second.
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made and seconded. On the emergency preamble, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Carrera?
Yes.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
And President Kamara?
Yes.
Motion to pass through all readings.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes through all readings.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on May twenty-first voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading with Counselor Sampson absent and not voting. These are fees for the Engineering Department.
Motion to pass through first reading.
Second.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on May twenty-first voted to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading with Counselor Reposo opposed and Counselor Sampson absent and not voting. This ordinance relates to the minimum housing division and the municipal organizational structure.
Motion to pass through first reading.
Second.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made and seconded. On the motion, Counselor C six, Counselor Potte.
Yeah, I missed this, uh, watching this meeting. Could somebody give me a brief, very brief overview of the orga- organizational structure changes here?
Counselor C.
We're gonna be passing it through first reading?
It's just when we did the organizational chart, um, minimum housing should have been under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health. And it wasn't, so it was just to clarify that. That's what we were told by Attorney Atkins, I'm, City Administrator Atkins is here, but that's what it was. It's not that, um, there's new job descriptions or anything like that, it's just.
Just new the minimum housing area.
To put it in.
Who they're, who they're.
It was just housekeeping.
Okay, so there's no salary increases or anything, it's just a structure?
No, just.
Reporting structure.
Reporting structure.
Going from.
Who they will be responsible to.
Building, from the Building Department to Board of Health.
Got it. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion to pass through first reading has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seat seven opposed, do we know?
Item nine, uh, excuse me, item ten is in, uh, proposed ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment. This is miscellaneous traffic.
Motion to pass through second reading enrollment.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made, is that a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eleven is a proposed ordinance that relates to the zoning map amendments for the waterfront transit-oriented development district.
Motion to pass through second reading enrollment.
Seconded.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a citation.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt a citation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the police chief's report on licenses?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt the police report, police chief's report on licenses has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item fourteen is a renewal of an auto repair shop license at sixty-seven K Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the renewal has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Second.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item sixteen is a request from the city engineer to open a street less than five years on Kennedy Street.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, all in favor? On the motion, on the motion to approve, Counselor C seven.
Excuse me, just a question on the street. How much of the street is actually going to be cut up to do this work? That's the one thing that wasn't indicated in the letter. I'm just curious.
Motion to waive the rules? Second.
Motion to waive the rules has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre.
Just real brief, brief, Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, just, I'm just curious, I, I noticed when I looked up the property, how far of much the street is being cut up to do this work?
Certainly, for the record, Dan Aguirre, Director of Engineering and Planning for the City of Fall River. Uh, Counselor Reposo, this is for a connection to sewer for the existing dwelling. They're actually on a septic system that was recently discovered to be failed. Uh, that would be the reason for digging back into the street, so there will be one single utility connection to connect to sewer. We will require them to do a minimum of a ten-foot patch curb to curb so that we have a consistent, uh, using flowable film. So it would be a ten-foot strip. They could actually do narrower, but the narrower we keep a trench, the more apt it is to, to fall and be depressed. So a ten-foot minimum stretch curb to curb would, would be the restoration.
And this is at the cost of the homeowner?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Aguirre, I yield.
Just, Mr. President.
Counselor C six, Counselor Potte.
In turn, just, I, I'm just curious, uh, in a case like that, that you require that the individual go curb to curb and do your specific specs, what kind of accountability do you have within your department to make sure that you can't implement that? I'm just curious. Are you, are you doing a bond for something like this?
No, so it's, it, it's because it's being done. So it's because it's being done by the homeowner using a licensed drain layer? So it falls under any other utility...
The contractor has to have a bond.
Right, the contractor...
The contractor has a bond for doing anywhere.
Hired by the homeowner.
Hired by the homeowner and they go through the permitting process and sign by your office.
And inspected by the city.
Very good.
Yeah.
We're in good hands with you. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Items 17 are applications on behalf of St. Anthony of the Desert Church to hang banners. Three locations are Pleasant Street, Bedford Street, and South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor President, please, just to be safe. I'll be on the grill that weekend so I can be favoritism.
Item 18 are drain layer applications.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the drain layers applications has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 19 are minutes of the zoning board of appeals.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept the zoning board of appeal minutes has been made, accepted and placed on files have been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 20 are minutes of the committee on finance.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, that's for the May 14th meeting, correct?
I'm sorry, yes, for the May 14th.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 21 are minutes of the May 14th regular meeting of the city council.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. The city council meeting is on May 14th. It's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the mayor's request for confirmation of the reappointment of John Brandt to the Community Preservation Commission. Mr. Brandt was selected as the, was designated as the member from the conservation.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm made and seconded. I'm the motion to confirm, Counselor seat one.
Just to speak on it, I have to say that I believe Mr. Brandt does a remarkable job and that the individuals on the Community Preservation Committee, so kudos to him. And I know the board voted for him to remain unanimously. So, great job. Shout out to John Brandt.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the mayor's request for a proposed ordinance regarding trolley fees.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Second.
Motion to refer to committee on ordinance and legislation has been made and seconded. I'm the motion, Counselor seat two, Counselor Dion.
Yeah, I would just like to point out, because obviously I'm not part of the ordinance committee, so just food for thought. When I looked at this, granted, $2 is not an exorbitant amount of money. However, I have a difficult time charging children six and under to have to ride the trolley. I picture myself as somebody collecting the money for tickets and there's a couple standing in front of me and they have a six-month-old baby in one of those little sacks in front of them. And I say, $10, oh, sorry, and $2 for your six-month-old. Can we say six and under? They can ride for free. Or five and under, ride for free. And then the other thing I thought was, I don't see any senior citizen discount either. So those would be my two sticking points. But I'm not part of the ordinance and legislation committee anymore, so I just wanted to say my piece now. With that, I yield, thank you.
Are you saying that because the majority of it's now senior citizens or...
Yeah.
Counselor seat seven, Counselor Ponti.
Yeah, and to add to that, as a member of the ordinance committee, one of the things I also look at is, when it comes to trolley rentals, the base half-day fee of $600, I'm looking at it from a school perspective. If schools in the city wanted to use the trolley, $600 for a half-day within the city is pretty large compared to, you know, the average cost of a bus could be $300 to $400 in a half-day situation. So, Mr. President, through you to the city clerk, I'm curious. If you wanted to add something to this, can it be...
Please stop. Someone's rubbing it something.
Pardon?
It's one of the fans.
The fans.
It's causing a lot of feedback.
Not my personal fan, but the fan that's cooling them down. We've got three fans rolling now.
No, I think there's something out there.
So do they have fans? You just lower the fans or...
Lower it. You don't know how to lower it?
All right, Counselor Reposo, sorry.
You don't know how to lower it?
But there was a...
Can I continue?
It seemed like it stopped, so that's good. Whatever you did worked. Go ahead, Counselor, it's all you.
Okay, I'll just continue with the hot flush, but that's fine.
Through you to the city clerk, I'm just curious. As far as adding anything to this, does it have to be done before it gets referred? Or can it be done in committee?
No, it can be done in committee.
That's why it goes to committee.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor seat eight, Counselor Sampson, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to second that. I agree. I think the numbers were a little high. It was a good starting point, but I think we could do something for the veterans, definitely the senior citizens. I'm like, ah, it's high. So I agree. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion?
There was a motion to refer to...
Has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a communication from the Director of Financial Services regarding the quotes for the annual independent audit.
Mr. President?
Motion to refer to finance?
We have a motion with no second. Is that another motion?
I have...
I can't call any Counselors. I have a motion and a second. Then we can have discussion. So I need a motion and a second before we can discuss anything.
I second it.
Adopt the rec... Oh, sorry.
What, what did you say?
You seconded a motion to refer to finance?
I did. When Counselor Kilby's wrote the motion.
Okay, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, this is the independent audit contract.
Motion to refer to finance has been made and seconded. I'm the motion, Counselor seat five, Counselor...
I thought that Counselor Cadim made a motion.
I was going to make a motion. I realized there was a second that was made. I was going to make a motion to adopt the recommendation for Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates.
And I would second his motion. So which motion would take precedent?
Referral.
To adopt, right?
Referral.
Refer to finance. Refer to committee on finance would take precedent.
Well, honestly...
We haven't had the vote yet, so who knows if it's going to pass.
Well, my feelings are, we've had Roselli and Clark &amp; Associates for several years. They've done a good job. They were the lowest bidders. We've had them for forever, as that we haven't had any complaints about them. So I would, you know, I'd recommend a motion to adopt. And let's move it. We're going to...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I made my motion before I...
That's fine.
I figured Counselor Cadim was going to make that motion to keep the auditor that we do have.
Okay.
So no complaints about this firm. And the resume is impeccable in terms of who they, who else they represent, cities of this size, so I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor seat six, Counselor Ponti.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I was intrigued to have the discussion with the committee on finance on this only because there was a legal opinion that was drafted by Corporation Council and Assistant Corporation Council saying that one of the bidders isn't eligible to conduct an independent audit. There was, I am curious. I'm sure that the city did follow the 30B process here. I did hear some rumblings that there was going to be some people withdrawing from this, so I wanted to make sure all three individuals or companies that did submit their independent audit services are prepared to move forward. So, you know, there just seems to be a lot of noise this year on the council's ability to decide, which is in the council's own purview, to decide who they want to have has nothing to do with the mayor's office. This is strictly a city council decision. And I'm just kind of confused as to why this year we got a legal opinion on something like this, candidly calling it to question the ability of one specific firm. There was no other legal opinion written on Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates or Markham or anybody like that. There was one firm that was called out questioning a possible conflict of interest because somebody was on the, used to be an employee of a city and several fiscal years ago, you know, to me, this just doesn't pass the straight face test in terms of what's going on here. You know, there was an analysis written here regarding one of the firms that says because this individual's a municipal employee, they're required to comply with the conflict of interest law. I don't want, I don't know what that has anything to do with future fiscal year audits. There was another comment in this analysis that says because the individual discussed possible one-time ARPA money, that they shouldn't apply. So, you know, there's a lot here. This is a council decision. There's no need right now that we need to make this decision today. We already had last year's fiscal audit completed. And I think we should bet this a little bit more. And candidly, if I can be honest with you, I don't remember the last, maybe the clerk knows or president knows, but in prior years, when we went out to bid, the city council, make it clear, went out to bid these specific projects, did you only, did we only have one firm that came out to bid? Or has there been multiple firms in the past? Do you know?
The first was in 2019.
Right.
Yeah, we had multiple.
And this is going on a 2019 contract or is this bid on every year?
It's every five years.
Every five, so this is, I understand, okay. That is what the charter says. Okay. I'll yield. I'll let you guys make your vote, but for me, there's just a lot of noise coming from this. And generally speaking, I don't remember that in 2019, so I yield for now.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor seat one, Counselor Cadim.
I tell my colleague not to listen to the noise. It's just, it doesn't benefit anybody.
I told you to shut up the fans, so you'll stop the noise.
I tried. No, listen, I made the motion. We've got three good firms, well, two that I know of and have worked with personally that I think are capable of handling the audits. But at the end of the day, and I know this is exempt from 30B. Accounting services are exempt. I recognize that, but we got three bids in. I made the recommendation for the lowest bid. That's essentially where we're at. I mean, you got two qualified individuals. If you're just looking at a price point for the various years that were provided, Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates are the lowest, so that's why I made the recommendation. So I don't disagree with my colleague in terms of the comments with, you know, the legal opinion. I did have a conversation briefly with the mayor today on several issues. One of those issues did come up about the audit. I did mention to him that I didn't necessarily agree with some of the opinions that were coming back in regards to Haig &amp; Sahadi and not being able or the conflicts. I don't disagree that there potentially is some conflict with that, but the, I guess the forever bans, I would disagree with. I think there may be a conflict with the fact that we still have some ARPA funding that's still available, and I mean, open that needs to be audited. I could understand that. But again, at the end of the day, I think we've got a firm that is the lowest bidder.
Counselor, point of clarification, we don't have to take the lowest bidder, do we?
No, we, well, so, yes and no, right? So I would, I would ask, I guess I would have to ask the administration, if the IG would tell you that if you stop the 30B process, even though it's exempt, you are to finish the 30B process. So I'm not sure if they just randomly called folks up to submit a proposal or they actually put out an RFP. If they put out an RFP, then you would, you should finish. So that's what the IG would tell you.
I'm going to bring that out there because we're being told we have to go to the lowest bidder. But yet, the charter says the council makes the decision. So how can we have both? You can't have the council choosing anyone if the only choice we'll have is the lowest bidder.
Yeah, it's like...
Doesn't make sense.
I don't disagree with you, but I mean, if you go through the process to, you're trying to find the most competitive price.
Correct.
Then you should follow that process all the way through. And then, so if you went out to bid, then you should follow, follow that. But it is exempt from 30B.
Correct. You yield, Counselor?
I do.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Sampson.
I just want to, I think we're, if we don't clarify my colleague's statement of what the confusion is, then I think we're being disingenuine to the public. statement of what the confusion is, then I think we're being disingenuine to the public, so I just wanna clarify why I think that we went out for, um, a legal opinion, because Haig and Sahadi, um, Mary Sahadi was the CFO of Fall River, so it, you know, there could be, I, I'm not a legal expert, but it, it does, I think it would make sense that, um, the reason why there wasn't this confusion in two thousand and nineteen is because Mary Sahadi's firm was not asking, you know, to bid to oversee the audit, so, I mean, the elephant in the room is, that is why there was a legal opinion given, I think appropriately so, whether you agree with the legal opinion or not, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but that's why, um, an illegal opinion this time had to be put forward, because she was putting in a bid, and I think that the citizens of Fall River would wanna know, should the former CFO, the last CFO before the other one, should be auditing our books, and I think that the community at large would wanna know a legal opinion on that, so that's the, that would clarify, I would say, some of the confusion that you have, why this wasn't a question in two thousand and nineteen, and now, because the former CFO is questioning, um, is putting in a bid to audit the books, so, with that, I yield.
Just gotta clarify a couple things, so that the people in the public will know, in two thousand and nineteen, the Mary Sahadi was the CFO, so they wouldn't put in the bids because she's not gonna do her own work. That case, I could see there'd be a problem if they were trying to audit their own work, but this case, she's been going for years, we've done audits every year, so, nothing that she's gonna audit is any creation of hers in the last budget or so.
But I will say, uh, Council President, that, um, there is some question about auditing the ARPA funds, so, uh, all I'm saying is that it wasn't a question in two thousand and nineteen because Mary Sahadi was the sitting CFO and was, you know, although the, the former CFO wasn't asking to be audited, that's all I'm saying, that there shouldn't be this big confusion of why now, why not then, the former CFO is asking, um, or putting in a bid to audit the city's books, and so that's why a legal opinion was rendered, whether you agree with it or not, that's why I, you know, I think it makes sense that that would be, had been done. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat two, Counselor Deon.
My only question would be, the name of the firm is Haig and Sahadi, do we know if Haig is actually the one that would be doing the audit? Because if so, then Mary Sahadi has nothing to do with it, and this whole conversation is a moot point, sorry. Um, I don't know, who submitted, who submitted the proposal? Was it she? Was it the, somebody on the Haig side?
The firm.
Is she gonna participate in the audit? Maybe, maybe not. So, are we hanging somebody out to dry that we shouldn't be? I don't know the answers to the question, but there's certainly a lot of questions to me that surround this, and I know that CCONC, they do audits there, I don't know what her participation is there, so with that, I'll yield, thank you.
They do audit a lot of cities and municipalities, a lot of Commonwealth. Counselor, seat, he had his hand up first, I'll go back to you.
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanted to answer her question.
Go ahead, just Counselor, seat one, I'll allow that, fine.
So, uh, to Counselor Deon's, I guess, question, I think she was asking me for, uh, so, Mary Sahadi doesn't physically do, perform the audits for us, I mean, she has a team, she oversees it, so she supervises it, so if there's any, any questions she may ask, or, or give a response to those questions, but she doesn't physically go in and, and, you know, do trial balances and things of that nature, so...
Right. Her firm does it.
Right.
And Haig's firm does it, together.
Yeah.
You yield, Counselor?
I do, thank you.
Counselor, seat six, Counselor Ponti.
So, I, I wanna just bring two things up. Number one, I, I wouldn't put it under the umbrella, before, first of all, before I get into that, I miss the days that the council could have possibly got a second opinion from our own in-house counsel on something like this, because the opinion that came out to me, I don't agree with, it's the second opinion that has come out to us today when it comes to opinion that I don't agree with, but I didn't nip that apart, everybody else did, so, I don't agree with this, okay, number one. Number two, any firm that would go about doing this kind of work has a CPA license, and they're valid firms, and I highly doubt any of these well-respected firms would put into question their license because of a prior engagement with a city, okay? How do we know that a, a, an employee of, uh, one of these other two or three firms never worked in the city of Fall River as an assistant purchasing agent or a purchasing agent in the past? How do we know that? Did we get a legal opinion on that? So, I, I wanna just make one thing clear, I think that if the City Council, it does not need to follow thirty B, whether they started it or not, I, to me, doesn't matter. I am not necessarily looking at the lowest specific company in terms of their base bid amount, I'm looking for quality in this audit, okay? And somebody that has familiarity with the city's finances, to me, is a plus. Now, I'm not saying other firms don't, and I'm not necessarily saying that specific firm, Haig and Sahadi Co., is gonna be the ideal firm, but what would be nice is if this council, who by the way, often utilizes its power where it shouldn't, like making decisions on whether we're gonna go clear a homeless encampment where we don't have that ability to do so, oversteps its bounds every single time we have the opportunity to do so. I'm saying that this is within our purview right now, this is within our ability to make a decision on what firm we wanna use, and I think a proper vetting process without just the base bid amount, to me, I think, needs to happen. Why can't we have these three specific firms come in and show us how they're gonna delineate themselves from the others? Why can't we have these firms come in and say, what kind of audit are we gonna see from you? We received one report from the, this other account, certified public accountant firm that totally, uh, in another report, there were findings on the use of ARPA and whatnot. There, there were missing items that I questioned the last time we were here about if we used ARPA money, it was, it filled out in another report, it was just, it was confusing to me, and it shouldn't be that confusing. Secondly, if we're gonna take the opinion like it is here from our respectable Corporation Counsel about the utilization of ARPA, well, at that time, I don't think we had a, a, a hired in-house contracted attorney that was looking at every single one of our ARPA expenses in two thousand and nineteen. That happened afterwards, so we have a whole person that has a legal degree that is looking on the utilization of ARPA. So, I'm not gonna be in support of the current motion that is before us, because I want the City Council to, if we can, and if we can't, we can't, to have the ability to interview these firms, and then the council will make a decision on who they wanna hire. It's not always about the lowest value, it's about what kind of audit are we gonna receive, and what kind of information are we going to receive from these specific firms? So, I just wanna make that clear. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat eight, Counselor Sampson.
Do we have a time restriction on when the audit has to be done? What's the time restriction, so if we get...
We just completed one.
March is next year.
March of next year.
We have, we have plenty done, to pick someone.
That I yield.
Thank you, Counselor, seat one, did you have your hand up?
Uh, so, I guess to my colleagues, uh, I guess in response to my colleague's statement, I'm, I'm okay with if we wanna refer this to Finance and we wanna have interviews, that's, that's fine with me, I'm, I, I'm personally familiar with two of the three that are before us, uh, which happen to be two of the lowest bidders, um, we've got their clients, so we, we know that they have the, uh, area of expertise in doing municipal audits, um, you know, we can see all the communities that they've represented in the past and continue to represent, so, if we wanna have those conversations, I just assumed, based on what has been provided, uh, in this RFQ, uh, to us, the price point, from my standpoint, having two firms, the, the two lowest ones are the ones that I'm familiar with, um, Roselli and Clark and Haig and Sahadi, that I would have been comfortable with, with either one of them.
Sure.
Obviously, we've got the legal opinion, uh, I, I think if Haig and Sahadi came in as the lowest bidder, then I, I, I would say that I would have more of an exception, uh, and would wanna have more of a conversation with Corporation Counsel with regards to the legal opinion, um, but again, I think all being equal in terms of experience and, uh, experience with municipalities, that, that they're, they're both two legitimate firms that could provide independent, uh, financial audits for us, so that's, that's why I submitted, uh, made the motion for it, but, I think if my colleagues, I mean, if it gets shot down, I'm, I'm okay sending it to Finance and, and having interviews if that's what, you know, the committee want, or the council wants. With that, I yields.
What's the motion on the floor again?
Motion on the floor is to, uh...
Adopt you...
Adopt, and there was a second roll call, Mr. President.
The lowest bidder that was out there. I, I just wanna say...
That doesn't pass, you'll do something.
We have a legal opinion, and as a Counselor, you have a right to disagree with that legal opinion, you have a right to talk to any attorney and get an opinion on your own, if we had an attorney for the council, guaranteed we get a legal opinion that contradicts that legal opinion, what good does that do? Still have to take a vote at the end of the day, what your conscience is telling you, what you have to do your own research and what's best for the city, and that's why we don't have a Corporation Counsel, you can't have two, two Corporation Counselors, they'll, they'll constantly be at each other's, opposing each other. So I am perfectly satisfied with the vote, I'm gonna be taken, um, I think I know who I trust to do the work, not that I don't trust the other two people, but I think, as you mentioned, Counselor, one person, individual, one, one, uh, company has done this for a lot of cities and towns, very well-respected, they have inside knowledge to this particular building, they've been gone for years, not like they were left six months ago, they've been gone for years. How many more years are we gonna sacrifice them not being able to do their job as they would do to any municipality throughout the Commonwealth, put a bid in to do the work? And as you stated, the Charter says, we make the decision, not we decide who the lowest bidder, we decide that we have to go with the lowest bidder, we don't have to. So, with that, let the votes fall as they may, and we go from there, but I know who I'm gonna support.
Roll call.
Roll call.
On adoption of the order, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deon?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
Objection.
Madam Clerk, Fontaine's order to business.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on May twenty-eighth, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying order be referred to the full council for adoption. This is the ten-year contract for the operation, maintenance, and management of the wastewater treatment facilities and collection system.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded.
Second.
On the motion, Counselor, seat five, Counselor Vice President.
I'm not gonna vote for this, because I think a ten-year contract is way too long. Um, we had a ten-year contract before, and then, then there were problems, and now you had to wait before you had a ten-year contract, and, um, I know that we can't change anything that's in the agreement, but there were a lot of questions that I had in the agreement, does this company have, um, do they have an engineering firm, do they have, um, a research portion to be able to research grants that are avail, available? If we're doing infrastructure, do they have an engineering to, a, a team to tell us what? Those questions I have, ten years, personally, I think is too long, but, there's a motion to adopt, there's been a second, roll call.
Yeah, I just wanna make one point clear, I, I guarantee you they have an engineering firm, I don't want the public to think that this company, we don't know whether they have an engineering firm or not, so, I don't wanna put, you know, along that, we're gonna go through ten-year contracts.
My, my biggest concern is ten years.
If it passes, that, we're doing with the country, we don't even know if they have an engineer, we, they have an engineering firm, guaranteed, they have an engineering firm.
My biggest concern is ten years.
I get it.
And I felt the same way about the cable contract, you go with ten years, it's crazy.
That's why we vote.
That's too long.
You can vote the way you want.
Just my opinion.
I just wanna throw it out there that we don't know if they have an engineering firm, we don't know if they have an engineering, they, they, they should do.
My opinion.
You're right. Roll call.
On adoption of the order, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Commander?
Yes.
I feel like Jack McDerris.
Mr. President, should we have a brief recess to sign the ordinances?
No, excuse me.
Can we have a brief recess to sign the ordinances?
There's more.
Two Councilors will take a brief recess.